Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 1st, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if you please stand.
Dear Lord, in these uncertain times we are faced with, give us strength to be positive and look to the future. Accept our fellow citizens for who they are and support all of our people as everyone strives for a better life. Look over our children and our elderly and those in need. Watch out over our troops overseas as they protect us and especially give strength and protection to our law enforcement and emergency services people as they protect our freedom here at home. In your name, amen.
Okay, the first item of business is a call to public hearing regarding a proposed high-impact ordinance. Recognize Ira Dove, the county manager. Ira?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and members of the public. A number of years ago, the planning board began working on the issue of what would happen if we had to evacuate certain vulnerable populations and what kind of ordinances would be needed to protect them. And they began working on the high-impact development ordinance and had come up with a draft with some recommendations. Then this spring, we had worked with Western Carolina University and did a study on land use planning with the Public Policy Institute and determined that there was a strong support for common regulations that would help with land use planning, particularly when high-impact uses were involved as such. So, the planning board met last week. They've been working on this for some time, but they met last week and have a more finalized version with distances. And I'm putting this forward for a call to public hearing, a high-impact development ordinance. And it talks about protecting vulnerable populations where the need to evacuate them would take a little bit of time, such as schools, daycares, hospitals, nursing homes, and simply putting in place buffers and distances from land uses that could potentially pose some hazards if something went wrong with their use and create a situation where these people would have to be evacuated, buying a little more time.
Okay. Okay, the next board meeting is the 15th, is that correct?
Correct.
15th, okay. Then we will schedule a public hearing, if there's no objection, at 5:30 PM on the 15th of August, 2016, in this room to discuss the proposed high-impact development ordinance. Okay, thank you. Okay, we don't have any administrative or agency reports. Move to the public comment session. Is there anyone present who would care to comment to the board? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on then with constituent concerns. Kevin, do you have anything? Michael?
No.
Bill? Okay. There are no adjustments to the agenda today, so we will then move into the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the July 18, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the second item, budget amendments. Julie Davis?
Good morning.
Good morning, Julie.
I have one budget amendment for you. This is after the fact. This is a fiscal year 1516 budget amendment. We don't typically bring these after the fact, but we have some invoices that we need to pay that we can't pay over the budget that's sitting there. We only need about $7,500 in this account, in this particular department. It's the wellness clinic. And I found a little extra money in sales tax. Our sales taxes are coming in pretty well this year. In fact, at 83.3% of the year, you can see in what you have in your handout, that most of those are coming in a little bit over that amount, and we just need $7,500. So I took that from sales tax to cover this increase in the wellness clinic.
Just a year in cleanup, basically.
Yes, it sure is.
Okay. Any questions? Julie? Okay, thank you. All right, next up is Patrick Johnson, our health director. He'd like to discuss the approval of public health fee changes. Welcome, Patrick.
Good morning. I'm here to present three fee structures, one from our dental office, one from our clinical, public health clinical services, and Garen Bradish will be here to present the environmental health fee changes. All three of these have been presented to our Health and Human Services Board and have been approved. The first one, our dental fees, they are based on the 2016 usual and customary fees in our county. We did have to add two services which you will see bolded on every page. We have this for the Medicaid, and then a sliding fee scale based on 100%, 80%, 40, 60, and 40%. So if someone does not have Medicaid or does not have dental insurance, they would go on a sliding fee scale. So these have all been updated and approved by the Health and Human Service Board. The clinic, public health clinic fees, we did have somewhat of a significant change in that all of our long-acting reversible contraception that we bill to Medicaid, we only bill the cost of the medication because for these folks, we get it at a reduced fee. That is basically the major change to this. We did decrease the shot administration fee to put it more in line with counties around us. All the rest of our fees are based on the fees structure that was provided to us through Raleigh, based on our staff time with a patient.
What would that make the flu shots this year? There was some confusion about that last year.
Oh, yes.
They'd be a lot less this year, all right?
I can assure you, we have fixed that. But, boy, I believe no more than $35, and that is for the high dose.
Okay.
So, and we did...
The issues last year were corrected.
Oh, yes. And part of the reason why we changed the administration fee for vaccinations was part of that issue.
Okay.
Environmental health fees, I believe Garen's going to present those.
This is just to kind of update some of our fees. We've not addressed any of the fees since 2006. Some of this is based on some recent legislation that came through the state. This includes what is called the private engineering option, where an individual could apply for a septic system with a private engineer doing the design work and the permit. We do have some requirements through this law that would have to do with us going out on initial startups, keeping track of those systems and things like that. We can set a fee for that, no more than 30% of what our standard fee is, and so that's what we have done for the private engineering option. And then on systems, large-scale systems that we have, we've set another fee for that for anything over 1,001 gallons per day. And that fee would be based on a scale of, what we normally charge is 50 cents per gallon per day of flow, it would be 30% of that fee, but not to exceed $500. So the other things that we have is the mobile home park authorization, that is $100 per site. That is in line just with, if we had to go out to a mobile home that was going to reconnect to an existing system, that's what we would charge. It is also the same charge we do if someone wants to move them home off a system and want to build a house there. So we wanted to set a standard fee that was across the board of $100. The migrant housing reports that we have to do for the state, we needed to set a fee for that. We're required to go out and collect a water sample on those, inspect the system, inspect the well, and send a report into the state, so we set a fee of $50 there. We also reduced a fee for a replacement of a well. When we have a repair of a well, we were charged at $375. We want to reduce that to $175. We have a charge from the state to buy the well test kit of $74, but that seemed a little high for some individuals who are having problems with a well or a well going dry, and they already have to pay this money, so we wanted to help on that cost. We've also set a fee for our full well test kit. That's based upon what the state lab is charging us with an addition of us going out and collecting the sample of $125. And we've added a public pool spa plan review that we are required to do of $250. That fee has never been set before.
And initially, we were talking about the septic tanks, basically.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
You're on this board, right? Have you read all this?
Yeah, this is all brought before that board and...
The actual cost for a permit for a septic tank's not changing, correct?
No.
It's just like if you hire a private person to come out and to design or test to be sure that your property can have a septic tank, then you still have to go out and look at it and monitor their information, so that's the $100. And that's the increase.
Yes, it's for people, and we could see this being more on large-scale systems because they're required to hire engineers anyway. They just wouldn't be getting a permit through us, but we are required to go out as part of the startup and maintain records on those systems. And this went into effect July 1st of this year.
Yeah, and just for informational purposes, I'm a, I am, you know, I've been associated with that in another state, how they don't have a public or environmental health that actually goes out and does that. They have a particular person that reviews it, and private individuals do the permitting, and then the county or whatever goes out and they charge $100. That's what they do, so...
I think the option of having a private engineer is a good thing, you know? It's so hard to ramp up if you have, you know, if growth starts real quickly. We've experienced in the past that long waits and developers, that costs money, excuse me, that costs money to wait months to get the plan, so I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, you have the ability to hire that and get that done and move it forward where you guys may not be able to get out there for some time.
Right. And we have had several large systems over the past couple of years for multiple houses, 36,000 gallons per day. Like I say, those require engineers anyway, and I could see where it would make sense just to go with that private option on that.
Right.
So the wellness permit fee, the septic permit fees still stays the same?
All that stays the same. We're not changing any of those fees. Like I say, most of this was just based on doing a little cleanup of our fees and because of some recent legislation. And we do have some things that when we went on a program review, when we went through accreditation with the Health Department, the Attorney General's Office wanted us to change some of our forms and some of our lingo, and some of that is on here, like the compliance inspection report. The fee has been set, it's just a change of terminology.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. Are there any questions or observations? If not, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Okay, there's no old business, so we'll move to new business. Up first is a request for one application to release ADM funds and three applications to reduce lottery funds from the public school building capital fund for public school building projects, which will be described to us by Joe Buchanan. Joe?
Good morning, Chairman Swanger, members of the board. Thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of Haywood County Schools, seeking approval for use of our ADM funds and our lottery funds. At our June 6th board meeting, our Building and Grounds Committee and our school board approved for us to seek application for the use of our ADM funds and for our lottery. Our ADM funds, we're asking for those funds to be used for access control at North Canton Elementary. That would allow us to put card readers on our exterior doors, allowing us to track movement, give the teachers easier access to the facility, and this will be one of our pilot schools to kind of see how this will improve the safety and efficiency of our facilities.
Okay. Any questions about that?
So, Joe, this is the only school that will have this?
Right now. This is our first school. We're wanting to make sure that we get everything set right before we proceed to the other facilities. And I have included some other offices, our testing offices, child nutrition, IT. I've tried to include two or three different programs so we can see how this will affect us moving forward. Just trying to ease into it very gently before we spend a lot of money on something that may not benefit us.
So you'll evaluate this over the coming school year?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
And this is, this money is for material. This will allow, our maintenance department is going to install it along with IT, and we will operate and run the system, so we're not paying a third party to operate the system or maintain it.
Could you just tell the public a little bit how it is operated, how it runs?
How the access control? The access control will allow each faculty member, for now, to have an ID badge or an access card. It's kind of like a credit card. They will be able to walk up to the door and touch their ID card or swipe it, and that will open the door for them. On facilities that we lease out to the public, we will have the ability to, for Mr. Swanger, if he wants to use a back and cage from 2:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, we only open it up from 2:00 to 4:00 for Mr. Swanger on Saturday. And that's the only time he will have access to that door.
He have a card for that?
He would have a card. If he wants to use this facility, he would come to us, we would give him approval and provide him with a card, and then those are the only hours that he would have access to that building.
So mainly that situation is where people use the gyms? And North Canton's not involved in that at all?
The community does use portions of that school.
Okay.
It's very limited, but it's mainly at that school, it's for our faculty. And just allowing them, right now, they have cards on a peg or keys on a pegboard that if they go out, they have to put in a peg to get a key out so they can get back into the building, and it is very troublesome. So this will streamline.
You talked a little bit about a parent that comes in during the school day, what that process is.
Parents will come to the front door. They do have a doorbell, so to speak, that they ring. The lady at the front office looks and sees whose it is. They can buzz them in and allow them to come to the front office and check in. Parents will not benefit or change from this access control.
This won't affect them coming?
Will not affect parents at all.
Buckham, I assume Buckham has its system, is that right?
There are multiple districts going toward this, and I'm not exactly sure what surrounding counties have it and do not, and what they have. I have spoke to others, and everybody's got a little something different. And we've tried to do what would benefit us the most, based on discussions that we've had with IT and with providers of this.
I think it's possible we're getting away from keys, because one of my, the hardest thing of being a high school principal is keeping up with keys and keeping people from making a set of keys, just like the stadium. In about a week's time, everybody in town had a copy, so, you know, you wasted your time.
It doesn't take long, and this will allow us to maintain access to the buildings.
So when someone separates, their card can be nullified remotely?
Yes. Whenever a new employee comes into the system and they receive all their email and everything, they will be set up with an ID badge and access card. If this employee is terminated, at the same time that they receive the phone call, they can push a button and take away all their credentials to where they cannot access the facility from the push of a button.
You know, it's kind of a sign of the times now, trying to protect and, you know, make sure that only the people that need to be there are there. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're having to do stuff like that, but, you know, we just, it's part of it, and, you know, I'm somewhat familiar. I think we've almost kind of got that similar system here, you know, where you do it and they can kill the card immediately if they need to, or, you know, redo it or whatever, so.
Okay, since we have two funding sources here, one being ADM, the second being lottery, I think it best to have an action on each. So at this point, entertain a motion to approve the ADM expenditure of $55,131 at North Canton Elementary for security as described.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to the lottery funds. Thank you.
Lottery funds, we have three different applications. One is for Waynesville Middle School roof replacement. This roof is 4D building. This roof is currently about 20 years old, and that is the timeframe expected on our roofs. It is currently a ballasted EPDM rubber roof and consists of about 16,000 square feet. Our estimated cost, and that's what we're asking approval for, is $150,000 to use lottery funds for that. And we would remove that roof, take it all the way down to the decking, and add tapered insulation, improving the efficiency, and adding slope to the roof so it's not flat.
Flat roofs do not do well.
You said D building? Yeah, which building is that now?
D building.
Yeah, but I mean, what?
When you go into the front entrance and you circle the front office, it is the building on your right is your exit.
What's, is that the newer building?
Long core.
Okay. When I say newer building, there's none of them, I mean...
Sounds like the oldest building.
The oldest.
The old building.
Next to the, I think the oldest one's on.
Well, A building is the oldest building up there. Now, is D building, old science building, is that it? Or, but that's the science building, what we would call, on the left, if you're standing out front on the left-hand side. So, okay. Yeah, what we called the science building years ago. Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move to Tuscola.
Okay. For, we're asking, the heat currently in our gymnasiums is, was put in in 1966. We currently have radiant heaters. They've got quite a bit of age on them. The parts are getting very limited, so we're asking to put in, convert from electric heat to natural gas, and the ability to add air conditioning to these gymnasiums. Our estimated cost is $150,000 per gymnasium, and that will allow us to condition both during the summer and the winter and maintain humidity and comfort for our students and community.
Your utility costs will go down dramatically, I would think.
Yes.
This is kind of the last part of remodeling those gyms, because over the past several years, there's been the effort. There's new floors, there's new bleachers, new windows and stuff like that, so, and these heaters have been malfunctioning for several years. I can remember being in there plenty of times and you hear a shorting out of electrical and look up and one's popping and cracking, so this is a well-needed repair. I can assure you of that.
And the Pisgah Gym will have the same?
Yes. Tuscola and Pisgah Gymnasiums would both be the same. We'd do both of them at the same time.
All right, any questions or observations?
I hate to see them go, we've had them so long.
Fifty years.
I can save you one.
You know, people in the upper bleachers, baked.
I'm sure he can arrange to have you a couple delivered to your house after you take them down, can't you?
We can help you, I need a couple.
Okay, if there's no further comments then, would entertain a motion that $450,000 from lottery funds be approved for the Waynesville Middle School roof replacement and the gymnasiums at Tuscola and Pisgah High Schools?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, next up is Sharon Woodrow, Library Director, requesting approval of the annual application for state aid to public libraries. Welcome.
Good morning. I am here to ask permission to file for state aid and approval of the packet that I want to send in. Do you have any questions?
This happens every year, doesn't it?
It happens every year.
I know Kirk is on the library board. Kirk, do you have any observations?
I don't, and I wouldn't know a whole lot. I accidentally missed the last meeting, so I didn't realize it until that evening. Sorry about that, too, by the way.
Basically, from what I'm reading, this is just a normal year-to-year application. You kind of fill it out and try to give some ideas of planning and what you're trying to do and to move forward, and it's part of getting the available funds that you need to grant.
Absolutely. It's a revenue that we try to get every year, and it's provided by the state. It's meant to help equalize the libraries in providing services, so it's based on a huge formula that they go by that gives us an allocation.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then would entertain a motion that the annual application for state aid to public libraries be approved for submission by Haywood County.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, next up is Ira Dove, who will discuss the advertisement of request for proposal for appropriate nonprofit foundation to manage funds from the sale of Haywood Regional Hospital.
Good morning again. Two years ago, in July of 2014, Haywood County sold its public hospital to Duke LifePoint. At the time, one of the announced goals was to designate proceeds for community health initiatives. On July 16, 2014, in the Smoky Mountain News, Becky Johnson reported the following in boat sales. "The proceeds left over in boat sales, the hospital, the proceeds left over will be designated for community healthcare initiatives, likely under the umbrella of a foundation endowment. What those might look like, how the foundations may be structured, and the specific health and wellness initiatives are still in the works." Follow-up comment from this board and follow-up with Ms. Hyatt from the Mountaineer. In April 30, 2015, the county commissioners wisely said, "Since it was a healthcare endeavor that generated the funds, any excess proceeds from the sale would be solely dedicated to improving health in the community." During this time, since that time, members of the staff have been working on a goal to have a vehicle to fund this goal, dedicated solely to improving health in the community. Now, please understand that the majority of these proceeds, under the agreement with Duke LifePoint, will not yet be available. The amount also will not be determined until all liabilities are covered. Yet, the time to look more closely at options is at hand. These options, the creation or partnering with an existing foundation for health purposes, is very common when dealing with hospital conversions and sales. In the past 40 or so years, many public... In the past 40 or so years, many public bodies have chosen to form foundations or to place funds from sales with existing foundations that would make grants for healthcare in their local populations. In fact, from a 2010 survey by Ms. Nagel and Mr. Brandon in Health Affairs, over 306 health legacy foundations have been identified in 43 states, primarily concentrated in the southern US states. Eighty-two percent of these generated directly from hospital sales. They hold a large amount of assets and do a wide variety of good in their local communities. Specifically, in the last number of years, Duke Life Point has also purchased at least four public hospitals. And those public bodies in those instances also chose to work or create foundations. That being Wilson Medical Center was sold, Rutherford Regional Hospital, Person Memorial, those are in Rutherford County, Wilson County, Person County, and then Mariah Para Medical Center in Henderson County. And again, they chose to use those proceeds from these legacy foundations to create or partner with foundations that were existence. And what I am recommending after review with the staff is that we first look, if possible, at partnering with the foundation that can provide appropriate expertise and support. The reason for this recommendation of initially forming a foundation is you may be able to gain, for the public benefit, some expertise on the ground if they exist and they've been working in grant-making, and you may be able to gain, being able to not go through the process initially with the creation with, and the restrictions with the foundation with the IRS, because you'd have a foundation in place and you'd have a track record there to work with. This does not mean the vote today would place the money or be a final vote on the matter. This is simply letting us put out the RFP and come up with a company for you to look at, a foundation for you to look at at a later date. We would seek proposals from qualified organizations to provide fund management certain services for certain funds received after the sale of the hospital under a restricted fund agreement with the county. That's the proposal. That those qualified distributions is part of that agreement, and there would be a lot of restrictions on that, and we can work with Mr. Killian and other lawyers who are experts in the area to make sure that those, the agreement, if you go down this road after a future vote, after looking at it, is the way you want to protect the purposes. Distributions would be used for public health prevention and cannot be used for other kinds of things. It would be preventative in nature, is what we're proposing initially. However, again, that is something, exactly how that agreement works is something that you can determine at a later date. This is simply getting the RFP out there so that we can open the dialogue with potential foundations and see what's out there, explore this option first. And it would also be proposed that the funding would be put forward in such a manner, the restrictions to make sure that it was used for this purpose and that you would have the ability to retrieve the funding. This is one of the ideas that will be in the RFP. Should they not meet the purpose to put it with another foundation, or should they, there be a failure of the health system, the ability to use it for more broadly for the health system itself? So, these are some of the goals that we have come with and I'm coming for you with.
So, this is basically just the first step in establishing the type of relationship we want with a nonprofit that has experience in hospital foundation-type matters.
Yes. This is the first step in finding a foundation, talking to a foundation, looking at that.
And this doesn't commit us in any way, at this point, to any particular course of action?
No. You would have it future, if, after we have those conversations, I'm asking the ability to meet with them and locate a foundation that would be the best. All of this, we'd have the information, who we met with for you, and I'll bring that back. And if you all choose to go to another course of action, that could be done.
Okay. Kirk, do you have any observations? We've talked about this for a while, so...
Two years.
Two years, yeah. And it's, you know, I mean, I think, I'm confident we'll have something in place so that there'll be an orderly transition once these funds become available, and I don't think they'll all become available at the same time either. So, there may be a series of releases of funds from Duke Life Point to Haywood County. So, it's a place to park the money.
Yes, and a group that can start to think about what would happen, what would happen with that for the health of Haywood County in the meantime. But yes, that's why I wanted to cite those initial conversations. This is us working on what you put forward initially when you got the funds for the hospital.
Okay. Any other comments or observations?
I just think it might be, for informational purposes, you know, we've looked at potentially if you brought it into the county, but we're limited as to what we can do with investments and go out with it. And so, therefore, our return would be very minimal compared to partnering with a foundation that has some abilities to do some other things. Am I correct, Miss...
That's correct, that's correct. We're limited through the local government commission as far as our investments, and currently, they're very low rates of return.
Right. So, this is a way that we can maximize the principal with the interest that, you know, we could use to benefit our citizens in Haywood County, along with protecting the asset. And I think that's where we all wanted, we wanted to protect the asset, because it is taxpayer, you know, monies, and so...
Good. Mr. Killian?
Mr. Chairman, one thing we probably should make clear, these funds are not under control off Duke Life Point. At this point, there's a trust that's been set up and it's an independent, uh, place.
That's correct. They're under the Public Health Authority, and just like you explained, the Public Health Authority looked during the investment period in their meetings with those funds, and they are very restricted, and so that's one of the benefits that we're looking at.
And we don't have a total yet of what that will be, do we?
No, no.
There's ballpark numbers, but we don't yet have a total until all the exposures of the hospital have been resolved.
That's correct, and some of those funds are, just as you mentioned, they'll be years before you get them, because they're parked in a trust under that contract agreement, like Mr. Killian was saying, and then some of those funds are in a different pot for ordinary business expenditures and settlement of the hospital business.
A potential lawsuit could be filed, for example, that could affect that total, but the statute of limitations would expire on lawsuits pretty soon, wouldn't it?
I haven't looked at that in a while. It should certainly expire pretty soon, yes. From the sale, from the date of closing, yes. It would, I think it would be just a, well, it would probably be a 10-year statute of limitation for having to do with the agreement, and that's, it's been, what, three years so far? But I'm not sure what kind of, what statute of limitations would really apply in this case. I'm not certain about that.
You'd potentially have multiple for the contracts, medical malpractice on different areas of any of the hospitals.
Those kinds of claims, yes. Yes, statute of limitations on those types of claims, Mark, yes, are certainly going to expire pretty doggone soon, yes.
Yes.
And then you got the Medicare look backs that can be, what, five or six years, Kirk? I don't know.
We've been dealing with some of those recently as well, so...
Okay, any other comments?
How many years would it be before we basically are in totally control of the section?
I think it was about six. And so, we're three into it right now.
Three years remaining.
And so, there are a lot of things that are falling off right now that's really good. I mean, when you have personal injury claims, we've already passed death-type claims, so...
Six years was kind of the outside date, so we could get some, maybe all of the funds before that time.
We're halfway through that six years.
Right.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing further, then, would entertain a motion that approval be granted for the advertisement of request for proposal for appropriate nonprofit foundation to manage funds from the sale of Haywood Regional Hospital.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Thank you. Ira, for that, we'll continue with the county manager for approval of appointment of Ginger Hahn as ETJ representative to the Waynesville Planning Board.
Yes, very simply, the Waynesville Board met and discussed this particular candidate, and you would have to approve Ms. Hahn.
I think I said...
You'd have to approve Ms. Hahn. There were six applicants, and she was the one for the ETJ representative, that they had requested be appointed to their planning board, the Waynesville Planning Board, and the appointment must be confirmed by you.
Okay. And they, their board voted on July 12th?
Yes.
To recommend her, so...
I guess these things aren't picking up unless you just talk right into them. I don't know what happened just then, but...
Yes.
I think you have to eat it before it picks it up.
I apologize. When I look down, it lost my voice.
I just wanted to, they're kind of looking at me like we can't hear anything, and I was thinking they probably can't.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
And you have to, I noticed that when I was talking, it just kind of went out and decided.
Well, fortunately, we're at the conclusion of our meeting, so...
Right.
Would entertain a motion that Ginger Hahn be approved as the ETJ representative for Town of Waynesville Planning Board.
So, move.
Second?
You take the choice.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, is there any other business for the board? If not, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.